I think we're ready, though. I have five o'clock for everyone. So I'm going to call the meeting to order. I hope everyone had a chance to look at the agenda. We need to have approval of the agenda for this evening or recommendations for adjustments.
I move we approve the agenda. Back up.
All those in favor?
Yeah.
All right. Bring them on to the public discussion. Let's see if we have members of the public on this tonight or today?
I'm attending from my public library's class.
Okay.
I had to see what we're doing. I can be here.
Okay. Do you have it? Okay. So you don't have questions for us, but okay. So those are the other members of the public we have. So we are just moving along. Items to be discussed. We have our guest this evening from Ingbert Anderson. And I'll turn over to Dan.
Yeah, so we're working on guiding the future of the library through the creation of a new strategic plan. As part of that process, we wanted to review our spaces and services to ensure they meet the current and future needs of the community. So in early May, the library engaged Joe Huberty for that review. Joe Huberty is a principal architect with Ingbert Anderson, joining us virtually. Joe is very familiar with this building. He's the original architect for the building that opened in 2040. He's worked on subsequent renovations. So he's with Acela Katiana, a senior associate and interior designer, Ingbert Anderson, who's been helping us with our carpet. And they're going to talk about two things. The carpet project, which is our most immediate project. That includes other parts of flooring as well as the public computer furniture. We're going to replace that. And then they're also going to discuss the strategic facility plan so that we're making these big investments in the library that we continue to do so in a thoughtful and long-term way. So we're looking at the utility and comfort. Joe, if you want to take it away?
Yeah, thank you. We would like to take it in that order, the immediate items related to the carpet replacement. Reassure everyone that they are making sense in terms of a longer range vision. But you'll get to decide that for yourself when you get to see the sort of progress we've been making on that strategic plan. So I'd like to share a screen and turn this first section over to Acela if I could. So I'm sending a request to share. You know, architects, we can't do much of anything without pictures. My kids are disappointed that my wallet is full of pictures of buildings. And you can imagine what family vacations look like. Okay, so I'm going to share, share. And then. Okay, does everyone see my screen?
Yeah, it's kind of small. Let me see if I can make it bigger.
Okay.
Oh, great.
Hey, so we've been working diligently on the carpet replacement project and really focusing on understanding the area of work and really trying to figure out the scope, where areas are needed to have carpet replacement and what other areas might benefit from something a little bit more harder or something that has maybe a different, a more durable surface, especially for those areas that are higher abuse. So in this plan, what you're seeing here right now is really the areas of work. The blue is the carpet replacement, the areas that we are focusing our efforts in. The green is symbolizing where we are inducing a resilient product rather than the carpet just because of the need that the staff has expressed. And then everything else in the gray is not in scope. And that could be down the road, future project. So you could see some of the very large areas that we've really taken a look at and discussed here in the last several meetings, tried to focus our efforts on making sure that carpet areas really are highlighted. And then we do have a few of those areas where a resilient product is really needed. So you see, there's only three spots.
I think it's important to recognize that while it's easy to focus on color, pattern, texture, and the aesthetic value of the flooring, we do want to recognize that it's a very high-traffic building and that there's certain parts of the building where you've already placed flooring. But after 20-some years, we want to make sure that we're making decisions that provide an equivalent level of longevity and ease of maintenance, provide that level of inviting, welcoming character that the building enjoys now and you are known for throughout the community, and make sure that as we anticipate future uses, the level of intensity of use is a part of the flooring selection process. So that's been a part of the process up to this point.
Correct. So looking at some of the carpet, we looked at several options for carpet patterns and carpet colorways. And really, what was narrowed down was more of a biophilic feel for the overall pattern that the staff really liked. And this really gives us the opportunity to bring some of those natural patterns that you see that really connects us to nature, whether it's the use of wood patterns or stone patterns. The staff really enjoyed and selected the more of a canopy tree. Pattern is what you see here. And so this manufacturer provides a variation of colors where you could see some of the white branching is representing a tree. Here's your looking up at the canopy. And then you could see the splotches of color are representing the grouping of leaves. So as you're sitting below a tree canopy and you're looking up, that's what you would see. And so what the staff really liked is the variety of color and the options within the families. And we had ordered a lot of different colors and walked throughout the library to look at them in the spaces. So this was the manufacturer that everybody really liked. And out of all these colors, there were a few selected. But you can see how some of these carpet tiles are grouped and installed in various ways. Some areas are heavily concentrated in one color where other areas have a mixture of neutral and pops of color so that there's a little bit of a break visually and also of color to neutral. And so rather than doing a more of a harsh delineation between a concentrated area of color to a neutral transition, like the image of the two chairs on left, there was some expression about that everybody really liked the softer, more organic transition from color to the neutral. And so in the next slide, why that is really this image. So this is showing how a neutral carpet tile transitions kind of in more of an organic, what I would say, pixelated way. Because these tiles are a large format, slightly larger than typical carpet tiles. They do give us that opportunity to get a little bit more creative with how we transition. And so this is one of the installation patterns that the staff really liked. And then we narrowed it down to four colors. There was a darker color that had some blue in it. I think, Joe, you're, there we go. Then transitions into, that could transition into more of a neutral gray, but still has some blue fleck and color concentrations in it. And then the other two were a medium blue and then a really bold, bright blue. All within the same pattern family, which have, you could see all of the branching effect in them. And so this was the, this were the group of carpet tiles and colors that we were, that everybody really kind of selected. So once we had our group of colors and carpet to work with, the next thing that we did was to take a look at the overall plans and the areas where we were going to introduce carpet. And we had discussions of where we wanted maybe pops of color, where we wanted our neutral carpet to go. And so we had several different options that we reviewed. And so the thought was that maybe we would start with highlighting the service points and then somehow transitioning from that and incorporating more color into some zones. So for the children's area. Nope.
Nope.
It's okay.
That's what you get when you touch too many buttons.
Maybe if you could just hit the next slide.
Yeah.
There we go. So after reviewing several different pattern, color blocking ideas, this is where we landed. So this is an actual carpet installation plan. So this is representing three of the colors that you see on the floor now, some of the samples. So as we walk into the library, we have in the corridor next to the meeting room A, going down the hallway and to conference room D, we have a carpet tile more of a rectangular, skinnier plank that has a more of a pebble stone look. And that is the product that we're installing in that corridor and meeting space. It is very complementary to the carpeting that's in meeting room A, and that is F chose it. So that was our first introduction to sort of the biophilic textural tile. It is a darker tile and it's going to withstand and really hide a lot of the foot traffic and all of the activities that happen between the meeting room and that corridor. And then walking through the lobby and into the main adult fiction area, because you do have a lot of high traffic and we have a lot of combination of adult fiction, checkout, and just for service point. The idea was to have more of a larger identifier for adult. So we went with the darker carpet tile. But then bringing in the pop of color to have around the service point as a focal point. And then walking into the children's space, that gave us the opportunity to introduce again, really kind of pulling you into that art wall space, but then leading you into the children's entry area, which is the medium blue that then brings you through the children's space and all the way to the back by the staff entry point and the storytime room. And then the two darker blue sections that you see are highlighting the play area in the children's zone. And then opposite of that is the grade school collection and all of those other wonderful collections up against the wall and some of the seating and activities that happen in that area. As we walk towards to the storytime, that is now an LVT product. So it's a luxury vinyl plank that we've introduced. And it has the planks that you see on the floor. They have a little bit of a variation to it. It's a lighter blue. The pattern is mimicking sort of a small leaf pattern in it. So there's a lot of movement in it. Staff and I walked around with all these carpet samples and LVT samples and really tried to decide and figure out what was the best color option for that. This was really what we, kind of everybody agreed on for the first floor. The second floor, what you're seeing, I'm sorry, the top gray, that's just existing areas of office spaces that we are not incorporating into the project. But what we are focusing on are the study rooms and the boardroom and the perimeter around the public space in the collection areas. And then the, some of the seating areas and the Friends book sale as well. Again, the service desk being a focal point. So in our rendered flooring installation image, what we show in the actual product is here is the three carpet tiles that were selected for the second floor. So the main tile in the center, the blue, which is a medium blue, really kind of bringing it throughout the entire space and then really changing it, transitioning it into the computer area where we're going to have more of our technology zone is what we're calling it. But then also at this area, creating a focal point around the service desk, bringing blue around the service point. And then on the north and south and west side of the plan, because there is a lot of variation in color within those three spaces, the training room and the boardroom, the darker tile seemed to work the best and complement all of your existing palettes. And that was really the thought and the whole layout. We did review variations of where carpet colors can go and how we would transition from one to the other. And this was the option that the staff really liked. And so this incorporated, you know, it's a little bit more straightforward than what's happening downstairs. But overall, I think this really helps, not just unify everything, but also in the future, it gives you the flexibility over by the adult nonfiction to move furniture and collection as needed.
At this point, we have a bunch of diagrams on phasing. I think everyone's interested in knowing how this project will be accomplished. But before we get into that, I thought I'd open it up to comments about the design concepts and the material choices.
Oh, I forgot to mention that we are replacing the vending floor area. So we do have the staff selected the dark gray for that area, the dark gray luxury vinyl tile. And then for the teen activity room, instead of doing a carpet installation, we are also doing the medium blue vinyl plank in there. There's a very high need for something that's cleanable, wipeable with all of the activities and all of the different types of materials that the team use. So everybody seemed to be on the same page about using more of a resilient product there. Any questions, comments?
What is the anticipated lifespan of the carpet?
So typically, at this point, each manufacturer has a variation, but anywhere between 10 to 15 years is really kind of a standard. You know, we see 20 years at sometimes, but with how, you know, active library spaces are, I would be comfortable saying anywhere between 10 to 15 years.
Would that be similar with the vinyl?
The vinyl would be about the same. Vinyl products obviously withstand a lot more abuse. But the caveat with the vinyl, I would say, is that, you know, we really have to make sure that it's maintained using the manufacturer's recommended methods. Sometimes we see products installed, resilient products installed and not cleaned and maintained as the manufacturer recommends. And that's really where the breakdown happens. So just making sure and that, you know, your staff is aware that you really should be following the manufacturer's recommendations for cleaning and maintaining any of these products. That will help the lifespan of the product.
How large are these squares? You said they're larger than would be done in a residential situation.
So what you're seeing right now, the samples that you have those are the sizes, yes. Typically, when carpet tiles were introduced into the commercial world, standard sizes were 18 inches, 18 by 18 or 24 by 24. Some manufacturers have started to go more in the plank direction. So there's a variety of different sizes now. But what I really liked about the product that we selected, it does have a larger surface. So I think the pattern is going to help hide a lot of the traffic and it's going to be easier to change and maintain for your staff.
It's maybe more a question for Amy, but it's like, how long has it been since the perimeter of the computer area has changed? So I think just with the second floor, if that's kind of defined by the carpet in here, is that they've expected to be as static as some of the other areas?
Well, part of the project too is to replace the computer furniture. And so this footprint here will incorporate what we're thinking for the furniture. So hopefully that furniture lasts another 15, 20, 20 years. Okay. And we're also thinking about furniture that's a little bit more flexible. So it wouldn't be tied in the same way that it could be used for other rooms as too.
Okay.
We're a bit more constrained than that because of the data project force. So we already have existing boxes.
We can come back to some of this later if there are further questions or comments.
Is Brad had any concerns?
Brad's been part of the process.
Yeah, which isn't to say he doesn't have concerns, but we tried to address them.
I think opposed to that. But when we talked about the tile, the approaches that we were taking, where we were putting the laminate and vinyl, excuse me, and where we were putting the carpet squares and the types of carpet we were purchasing, I think he's very happy with the choice.
Because Brad's a facilities manager coordinator, so he keeps the building functioning.
Yeah, we do always ask these questions because he's the one that has to maintain them.
Correct. And he was very happy with our suggestions.
All right. I want to talk a little bit about phasing. We prepared a summary of the approach to phasing. I think everyone's concerned about the length of time and the impact all of this will have on the public. We wanted to take a few things into consideration. One is really avoiding any off-site storage of the collection or materials. We wanted to minimize the amount of time that any portion of the building was out of commission. Wanted to work as much as we could to allow access, controlled access to staff from time to time. And that's a bit of a balancing act because the more we allow access to the collections during a particular phase of recarpeting, the longer the process will take. So what you're about to see is a balancing act between those kinds of considerations. It's going to be really important to make sure that the public is aware of what's coming up, especially during one of the periods of construction, which tends to be a bit noisy and could be very disruptive to people given a particular use that they might have in mind. So as you look at these diagrams, we're trying to balance all of those considerations. In the diagrams, you'll see typically three components of work. The first week is typically moving all of the materials and collections out of the way. The big consideration are the book stacks. And we're controlling the bid documents to require that the bidders have range movers, which basically allow them to pick up the ranges fully loaded with collection and slide them out of the way. What you're seeing in the diagram here is the entire second floor collection that is spread out from the west end of the building up to the technology zone, compressed into about half of that. And the idea is to pull these as close as possible, given the dimensions of the range movers. This falls within the structural capacity of the building. So we don't have to worry about overloading the structure. And if you're thin, like someone who isn't me, you can find your way in between those ranges and retrieve something. But you can tell by looking at the diagram that our plan is to pack this pretty tightly and there will be minimal nominal access for staff to kind of win their way through and retrieve things from time to time. In practice, the movers will probably start to stack some of these tables, top to top, and provide a little bit more room. But we took the conservative approach and kept everything on the floor to calculate the amount of space that could be developed within any particular phase. The second phase, typically a week as well, is demolition. And that is removing the existing carpet and then grinding the concrete floor substrate to remove adhesives and then patching any imperfections. This is the essential step in your warranty. It's easy for a manufacturer to control the production of the tiles in their factory. But the adherence of the tile to the floor, the substrate, really depends on the quality of the preparation work. And the glue really doesn't have a chance to work if the underlying concrete structure is irregular, uneven, caked in dirt, has semi-attached leftover adhesive. And so this is the critical step in warranty. And it's also the one that is noisy. It's also the one that takes the longest. So in this week, I would expect to see three to four days of that five-day work period really being given over to grinding the floor smooth. And then the installation can occur following that. The tile installation actually goes pretty quickly. Or because it's so quiet, it doesn't seem as long to the occupants of the building as the demolition. There will be a partition installed along the line of the DMARC between publicly occupied space and storage or construction space to help control dust and keep people out of the active work zone. And the diagrams are a little bit simplified. We will try and maintain access to some of these public functions as possible, keeping in mind that a space of this nature, if there is an emergency, we can sneak out the back and people can find their ways to emergency exits and the like. But some of the spaces are too far to allow legally compliant access because they're too far in one direction and don't allow a second means of egress out to a safe exit. If we can prevail upon contractors to stack some of this material, we might be able to push some of the staged collection a little bit farther south and open this up to allow access. But that's presuming that they're willing to move more of the ranges and work around the columns. And that would have a disadvantage in terms of budget. So we're leaving it up to their discretion to offer that if they believe that they can be competitive and provide that sort of secondary path. So from a planning standpoint, we're thinking that some of these rooms are going to be inaccessible during the early construction phase. And then it's a simple matter of working our way through the building. The one nuance actually occurs in this very first phase. We're going to try and limit the number of mobilizations and get the contracting team to address the first floor work in parallel with the second floor piece so that we're ready to receive temporary uses in meeting room A. And when we say meeting room A, we're really thinking of taking over all of A, B, and C at that level. Once that step is done, we would move the collection all the way to the west and work on the centerpiece of the building. And you can imagine the next piece is to spread things out in that west edge, take everything that's at the east end of the building and compress it into a zone that sits in the middle. We're going to try and keep a little bit of the stair elevator path open and then partition off a work zone that allows you to reuse the entire center and west end of the building while the east end is being recarpeted. You can see we're into the middle of June at this point. With the second floor done, we're allowing a one-week period to take care of punch list items. Sometimes when the base along the edge of the carpet is removed, there's a little damage to the walls, might be doing some touch-up painting. If there's any sort of issues with the flooring itself, that would be cured. And then there's a week, first week of July, in which the computer curls would be installed pretty much where they are located now. But as was mentioned earlier, they're distinctly different product. And Acela will walk through that in a bit. The lower level is a bit more of a challenge. There isn't really space to keep parts of the building open during construction. So we're trying to push this a little farther back, hopefully towards the end of summer reading or following up. This can be organized to avoid the worst of that potential conflict. But the idea is to have a temporary use space set up in the meeting room suite. So it would bring a little bit of collection and a little bit of activity up to that node. But then close off the majority of the first floor. It's really only access up to the second floor. Circulation would want to occur up at that level. Maybe we can provide a self-check or two at this level. But the idea is really to pull everything to the front of the building, refloor the back of the building, and then in the next phase, reverse that, push all of the shelving and seating onto the new carpet while the front of the building is demolished and refloored, and then spread everything back out. And then spread everything back out once those areas are completed. You can imagine all of that is pretty intense at the connection points. So the areas in front of the elevator and stair are left to the end, and those are done in a touch up period. This is early September. And then a punch list in the middle of September. Final payment warranty submissions, all those good sorts of things are typically a bit stretched out. But I would expect all of that to be completed by the middle of October. But to the public's perception, middle of September should see the end of real, real work in the building and a return to, return to normal. Any questions on that piece?
As far as the contractors go, and maybe you don't know this yet, what will be there? Do they? What's the typical, I guess, scheduling for them? Are they working at all through the night or are they doing any weekend work or anything like that?
Yeah. Typically, they would work what is a normal construction shift would start pretty early, six thirty or seven. They tend to be done by three. In a lot of instances, depending on what you have planned for events or the nature of the specific task, and that grinding is one example. We may work with them and with you to do a better job of balancing those noisier activities so that they occur very early in the morning or are complete by a certain time. We're always looking for that balance between. We've extended the work period to the point where they're going to charge extra for the work. But it mitigates the impact on your patrons. So sometimes we'll see the work from six until ten with grinding. But carpet installation could be more of the seven to three thirty kind of kind of work period. It's unusual to ask people to work off hours. You have extended hours, so working essentially third shift would come at a significant cost premium.
Yeah.
Something to consider, but at this instance, the thought is that the impact of the operations wouldn't be such that a significant number of people would find the building unusable. It is still fairly large. There's opportunities to find quieter spaces away from most of the active construction zones. And that's, that's the intent at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any concerns about air quality during this period, particularly for our staff exposure?
Yeah, absolutely. There are requirements of the bid documents to control dust. There are concerns when materials are just pulled up. But the biggest thing is the grinding, the adhesive and the the concrete. Both can become friable and become suspended. So there are extensive filtering requirements to protect the contracting team and all of the building occupants. Part of that measure is partitioning off the active zones with essentially a plastic sheet from floor to ceiling. And then in space filtration systems. And then we would require changing out of building equipment, air filters at the completion of the project. Because you have so many, I think we can be more of a phase by phase approach at that building's equipment filter replacement. Once we're done with a certain zone, if it's tied to a particular air handler or that air handler and an adjacent one, we could do the filter replacement at that point.
I just hadn't been thinking about the fact that this air contamination will also go through the air conditioning system in the middle of the summer and go throughout the entire building.
Yeah, that's why the in-space filtration is critical. You want to get it before it gets into the system. And then we would want to acknowledge that as as robust as that can be, there is going to be something that finds its way in. And so replacing the filters within the system as soon as possible. The actual grinding within each phase is expected to be less than a week. So, you know, we're not talking about four months of grinding away before anybody replaces any of the filters. So I think we're back to you on equipment.
Okay. So for the computer tables, staff had shared some items that I had seen in other libraries. And so with the products that they had looked at previously, we looked at several manufacturers. And part of the, part of the work was to really incorporate some new lighter dividers between stations and an easier method of grouping computer tables together, computer stations together. So rather than having all of the pinwheels scattered throughout the space to be a little bit more efficient and clean, a cleaner installation, we are looking at more of a benching system, which is what you're seeing right now. And so the benching system was preferred. In the next slide, you will see the other manufacturer that we actually are moving forward with, which is Han. Han has a variety of different options and different ways of connecting power and data to these systems. And so what you're seeing in the image on the left is a table that's divided by a a tray, a wire management tray, and then it also incorporates areas for power and data to be distributed to each computer. On the image on the right, you see the tray underneath the table as well, and you could see some of the open spaces so that things can connect and be disconnected. But then there is a more of a flexible whip connection into the floor. So where your power, your existing power is located, we're going to be connecting to those areas. And that is the type of connection that we are anticipating and using. So then that power gets distributed to the wire management where it holds all of the electrical power and then it distributes to each single location where we have a computer. In the next slide, you will see some of the options that we have for the computer stations. So one of the things that staff wanted to incorporate were panels at each end so that they kind of mimic what you currently have, rather than having acrylic panels all across. The idea is to have more of a wood panel at each end and then have eight stations in total in each computer bank. But then the divider panels between each person is the acrylic material, which is what you're seeing on the top image with the black task chair. So it's going to be a frosted acrylic divider. So there's going to be some translucency and borrowing of light. It'll feel, it'll feel lighter and brighter. And then we're just going to use some complimentary finishes. There, we did select some initial finishes with staff on the product. So the end panels would be wood. The laminate top would be a lighter laminate top. It still has some texture to it. And then the dividers in between would be that white frosted acrylic panel. So when we connect these benching systems in the next slide, what we're going to be doing is using your existing power and data locations. And then, sure.
There is no next slide.
Oh, there isn't? Oh, okay. So what we're anticipating using is at each station, we are going to have two connection points. And they, all of the benching systems really aligned to where your existing computer stations are. So we've, we've investigated where that would be and, you know, we've talked to staff and I think everybody feels comfortable with our new layout and our recommended product. Any questions, Andy?
Okay, no.
Okay. Oh, yeah, there you go. So. Yes, so the highlighted areas are the ones that we are removing. But then this actually shows all of the pinwheels, your existing computer stations on the, on the left hand side. You could see red squares are designating power and data coming through the floor and kind of distributing to each computer station. So we are going to be reusing those locations, but then distributing the power and data more cleanly throughout each of the computer groups. So we are maintaining forty computer stations.
Hey. Okay. The next part of the discussion turns towards the strategic plan. So if there's any, any other questions on carpet or computer carrels? Those, otherwise I can dive in.
I think you can dive right in.
Okay. So it's a multi-phase investigation. We wanted to pick out a few items to make sure that we had a good sense of where the library was in terms of serving the public. And some of that was looking at your statistics and understanding just how unique Iowa City is in the extent to which it uses library service. So the big things that really jumped out is that the library is really first in a peer group of large Iowa public libraries in terms of the visits per capita, the total circulation and the average attendance per program, which when you think about the three key uses of the building are the the biggest concerns in driving a space analysis. We looked at that in some detail and the libraries we compared ICPL to were the eleven largest service populations in the state. We started looking at the the top twenty-five, but there's a clear D mark in terms of the population between the most populous eleven service areas and the next fourteen. So the comparisons that we looked at really focused on Iowa City. And we tried to look at the service population listed for the state of Iowa statistics in acknowledgement that it isn't necessarily directly aligned with the municipal boundary population, so the the population of the incorporated city. As I mentioned, the number of residents that you serve, pretty significant. When you look at the number of people you serve in the amount of space that you have, you provide the densest use per square foot of any of those eleven, eleven libraries. So when you add up all of the branches, bookmobiles, main libraries, you're doing everything essentially out of a single building with a single bookmobile. And that level of intensity of use on a per capita and per square foot basis is top of the peer group. So if you're feeling some of the strains of the building perhaps being too small, there's a reason for it. The physical circulation, which really has more of an impact on our study than digital circulation, is still pretty significant, fourth highest in terms of per capita use levels. When we look at that in comparison to ebook use, you're still pretty high. And it speaks to a level of investment in digital resources that suggests that there's an opportunity for residents who want to use digital delivery of those materials that it is available to them. And it isn't a matter of physical use being driven by the lack of an electronic resource. You offer both in significant quantities to the community. So the intensity of use of the physical collection isn't a result of something missing somewhere else. And that makes us focus on continued viability of those physical resources and the attendant space. The circulation for those materials are pretty significant. And in terms of the amount of times that a book circulates, I'm using books as the physical items, focus primarily on books, although it does include other media. The number of times that an item circulates annually is top of the peer group. And the total circulation per capita, as I mentioned earlier, top of the peer group. So when we start to think about the ways in which the building space is utilized, it's important to maintain a significant amount of space to support the intensity of that, that type of use. We also wanted to look at the use of the building for things other than circulating materials. And so one measure is to look at the number of times someone comes into the building. Some of those visits are to borrow materials, some are to attend meetings, and we looked at that separately. And some are just to utilize the space. So in some ways, this is a combination of all of those uses. But the intensity of use in terms of the visits per capita, pretty significant. And then when you look at the number of hours that the library is open to the public, by virtue of really only having the one building, all of those visits have to occur within your existing hours of operation. Whereas a library such as Des Moines, the total number of hours is a combination of the hours available at all of the physical locations. So it's, it's really quite staggering, the intensity of use that you're getting out of the one building. Programming levels are steep. This matches the the information provided by staff, which suggests that there's, there's challenges in trying to schedule the types of programs that they would like to conduct for the public because the space isn't available. So the the programming effort that's made to serve the public is significant. And from time to time, the challenge is really the availability of a space of an appropriate size. Sometimes it's finding a space that has that, that smaller scale capacity so that you don't have to take a larger room, pull it out of service. And sometimes it's, you really need a large venue to accommodate the most popular of events. And that's seen most heavily in the use of meeting room A, B, C to support really all of the large scale programs that you have for any of your user populations, typically categorized as children, adults, and teens. But it could be other interests that are crossing age, age lines. So this in combination with general attendance really leads us to focus our attention on considering the number of venues and their size and whether or not it's supporting your efforts to provide quality programming to the community. Children's programming really jumps out, pretty significant use. Adult, more in line with the peer group protection projections, teen a little bit under. But children really head and shoulders above most of the group. Here you see the, the adult. So. Want to make sure we're acknowledging that. Here's an instance where the statistics, it's nice to be a little bit lower than some of the peers. This suggests that people are not waiting in line to use the computers. And by general observation, by the number of times we've been in the building and reports from staff, the number that you've got does seem to be a good fit between use levels in adults. In children's, the story is a bit different. That especially during heavy use times over the course of the summer and other out of school times. There's, there's potential conflicts between users. There are waits, there are people frustrated with the wait times. And so when we looked at the, the program for the spaces, we considered those, those differently, adults and teens. That was part of the existing condition analysis, really taking into account the observations staff has made. And one of the big ones was that the A, B, C combination of the primary public meeting spaces on the first floor are almost always in the combined configuration. And there isn't really the ability to use B and C very often because of the frequency of use demanded by those larger events. And the intensity of that use mixed with the people arriving in the lobby space often creates a confused arrival sequence and introduces potential conflict between people coming for, for those various uses. So cognizant of the fact that A, B, C really doesn't function as three spaces and the frequency and the volume of traffic in that area is a source of frustration. There's opportunities to address overcrowding by virtue of the conflicts introduced into the children's space, really as a function of it being too small. The intensity of use across the board, much more significant than it can be handled by the limited amount of space without compromising use of other functions. In fact, I don't think that you could address all of them in the space available. So for programming, for active learning, for play, for computing, for just sitting around and enjoying materials with with children or someone in your care, there's a lot of conflicts in the people's space. with children or someone in your care, uh, there's a lot of conflicts in the people's space. And addressing those uh properly would really impact the ability to accommodate a significant collection, uh, which in and of itself is, is challenged the wrong way. We also wanted to know that there's challenges in the staff work zone, uh, the children's workroom, uh, definitely too small for all the things going on in there. Uh, the garage has been given over to uh maintenance functions and facilities management services. And the access services space, by virtue of its geometry, as well as changes in staffing patterns and service delivery, is a, is a bit challenged. I think the overall qual- did the quantity of space might be close to what we need, but the odd geometries and the pressures on the east end, especially backed by the entry in the book drop, are exacerbating some of the challenges. But it's really this northern end that isn't working uh well. And then, of course, the overflow support space uh for facilities management is accessed via uh pulling materials through the public zone and finding your way to the basement. Uh, there are some areas that are ineffective in terms of the nature of the furnishings. Uh, they aren't flexible, adaptable enough. They're overly specific to uh media, especially the audio collections. Some of the shelving is really too high for your youngest patrons to browse effectively. Uh, it works in terms of capacity, but it's more of a warehouse, more than a discovery, exploration, a discernment kind of zone. And for uh young patrons who are, are really uh entirely focused on browsing by by I set exploration and not by uh searching a catalog, that's really pretty problematic. There isn't enough space to differentiate between subzones within various collections. So it really does get pretty packed together, and there aren't many intuitive options for uh discovering the types of materials that you, you are interested in perusing at greater depth. There are opportunities with the current fiction collection to be repurposed in a variety of ways. And I think there are ways to explore that, and we address those in, in the next section. So it's not all gloomy news, uh, but there are areas where it's the type of furniture uh that really should be addressed or how the furniture is used. Uh, but in many ways, it's the lack of space, and that's particularly true in, in children's. So opportunities in those shelving areas really do exist. On the second floor, the biggest challenge seems to be that the teen zone is, is way too compressed for the volume of people that you really want to accommodate. And because they're compressed, uh, it fills up quickly. And then it becomes a non-verbal signal to other groups of uh young adults and teens who might want to take advantage of the services that there really isn't space for them. While technically, there might be space for one or two, uh, it's just perceived as overcrowded. And what we really need to be able to do is accommodate multiple smaller groups of teens uh at, in parallel situations, uh, because they, they can't use it in sequence. Uh, and so finding a way to expand the amount of space given over to those functions, even though it's a small part of the day, it's the critical part of the day for, for that user group. So that's, that's a significant challenge. Uh, the furniture in, in many areas has become outdated. Uh, we addressed some of that with the uh computer tables. Some of it is just general wear and tear. Uh, some of it is acknowledgement that uh four-person tables, while they are iconic, uh, and in many ways uh help connect, connect one to uh the library's heritage, they really aren't as effective in terms of flexibility or accommodating uh interpersonal space as one would like. And shifting to a more one-to-two-person configuration would see greater utilization uh within the same amount of space. So the seat count probably goes down, but the use of the seats that are provided would definitely go, go up. And then there's areas such as the uh south edge of the building where something that's less uh traditional library and more contemporary technology bar or uh uh, I'd like to sit and do something while I look out the window at the ped mall. Take better advantage of the library site uh would increase the, the satisfaction of patrons uh using that, that space in the building. So as things age out, there's ways to improve the utility as well as the aesthetics and comfort of the, of the space. We did want to acknowledge that the way in which the staff services the community has changed, uh, technology has really moved away from a paper-driven service delivery model. And there's a number of spaces in the building that really were based on uh physical paper as a means of delivering service, either directly or in a secondary way through record retention and whatnot. So those spaces within workrooms or within the building in general really can be considered as opportunities to rethink uh either the staff zone itself or free some of the staff zone up for the introduction of public functions. Uh, in some ways, you would be borrowing and shifting that kind of space so that the space becomes more immediately adjacent to public zones. Uh, but that part of the analysis comes a, a bit later. Uh, there are ways in which we think the staff can be uh made more efficient. Uh, we've artificially separated uh work zones based on an older model of staff organization. The current model doesn't fit the way the building is constructed. And rather than forcing people to work within that configuration, we think there's opportunities to reorganize first-floor space in particular to pull some of the second-floor staff space uh down to that level and allow departments to function as single units rather than as split units. And that too could be space made available either to other staff functions or to uh the public. So opportunities there uh to make the existing space uh more directly beneficial to the public. Oop, I don't know how this happened. So ignore that number eight. There are similar ways to think about the, the seating zones, uh, the staff, uh, excuse me, the the large nonfiction collection has really seen a shift. The uh large how-to nonfiction collection really has moved to video uh and in many ways to streaming video. So the amount of space given over to print can be focused more directly on the storytelling aspect of nonfiction. And then on the east end of the building, there's an opportunity to think about the end of the building that was focused more on reference-related, print-focused reference and create an identity for that space that is more consistent with contemporary service, which isn't so heavily dependent on print as the basis for reference services. It's also one of the more pleasant ends of the building. Uh, really anything along the, the southeast, south, and uh southwest edges of the building, uh, good access to natural light. So making sure that that's given over to people's space uh is important. So with those two pieces of analysis in hand, kind of the, what do the statistics tell us? What do the peer group uh libraries tell us? And what does the various stories that staff has collected tell us about the building? We moved into a definition of space need that was as customized to Iowa City as we could make it. The idea was to think about space in some of the traditional blocks of space, but acknowledge that the lines between these, these space uses have uh definitely blurred. So the old-school separation between what's a space for people to sit and read and what's a space for people to use for technology, definitely not a hard line as it was in the past, especially with people bringing their own device. Uh, so we went through this, we went through this in uh significant detail with staff, trying to acknowledge that people discover materials by browsing uh more often than they do by looking things up in the catalog. There's a significant number of people who won't stop and ask a librarian as much as we would like that uh for advisory. And so that ability to discover and discern and find something of interest really does depend on a suitable environment. So lower stacks, wider aisles, more face out, those are important ways to present the collection to the public and make the space that is allocated to the collection uh drive circulation higher because it's just easier to use. Uh, lots of layers of uh investigation in this zone. But the idea is to create as many places for people to serendipitously come across something that's of interest while maintaining the ability for someone who knows what they want to find it in a simple and rational manner. Uh, so uh lots of opportunities to think about the ways in which uh physical materials are presented. Uh, in many ways, this often results in a smaller physical footprint with higher circulation and greater patron satisfaction and access to the collection. So a lot of math behind all of these, but the idea is really expressed in the, the images, try and create environments that are pleasant for people. And that extends to uh the seating areas as well. Talked a lot about spreading things out, spreading people out so that they are comfortable in the environments in which they find themselves. So our model really provides fewer seats, but more space per seat so that people aren't forced into situations where they have to be comfortable with that, that smaller scale personal level distance and can really take advantage of the more common socially acceptable distance of four to eight feet. Uh, there are exceptions, of course. Meeting rooms uh were a little bit more comfortable in those settings if we're closer. Uh, some of the environments, such as the uh computer stations that Pacilla was describing earlier, take advantage of things like screens and other physical separations to let people feel that level of comfort within greater proximity than that uh six-feet eye-to-eye kind of separation. Uh, so we're trying to balance actual physical separation with uh some of those tricks that are uh psychologically acceptable to, to end users, to be efficient in, in both ways. Uh, and then finds the kinds of spaces that people seek out because they come for different reasons at different points uh in their life. And you've got people across the spectrum of needs uh using the building. So kind of a, a place for everyone, uh, be it social, active, individual, contemplative, uh, create the kinds of spaces where people feel comfortable and can tell from the visual cues of the space how to behave in that space. A lot of people know that they're being a bit disruptive. And in many instances, being, being a bit loud is an acceptable use of the space. We just don't want it to be in occurrence uh within the same space or immediately adjacent to a space that really is intended for uh quieter activities. So creating those pockets of space is important. Uh, and that's attended by an allocation of a number of seats uh per, per person uh and a number of square feet per person. We talked a little bit about the number of seats that the library needs to accommodate existing technology use patterns and think about the shifts that are attendant uh to uh likely emerging technologies. Uh, so there is a place for that larger assembly of uh workstations that's easy for staff to share that uh the public can find that they know they can uh behave in a, a particular way, as well as spaces for people to do quicker hit uh group learning, uh, individual learning uh and really take advantage of the wide spectrum of potential uses of technology. So again, uh, a lot of different environments. We looked at how those environments were arranged uh within the different zones, are really uh thinking about the number of seats across the spectrum. So forty was good for teens, excuse me, adults. Uh, we're suggesting eight for teens and children being bumped up to, to twenty-two. We see that as a need today, uh, and it would help uh move into the future. So right now, that's a, that's a problem area we're trying to address with the area projections. Interactive learning is a challenge. Some of it's accommodated because that interactive learning can be addressed within uh what are traditionally thought of as small-group meeting spaces. Uh, you've got some uh digital meeting uh media spaces uh that have Iowa City-specific functions, uh, not so much attended to production or editing of uh media. Uh, baby garden, uh, and for kids, uh, different types of uh uh experiential learning uh that involves uh different senses. So there's a variety of spaces. For us, it really wasn't as important to know exactly how you were going to use it because that will change over time. But to make sure there were sufficient venues of uh appropriate size so that you could accommodate shifts in the level of use uh as interests come and go. Uh, so relatively small, uh, one, two, uh, three-person spaces, small spaces of six to eight people, uh, larger uh labs of various sorts uh that may or may not have that lab-like characteristic with a durable floor and easy access to power. Uh, but whether it's uh lasers or vinyl cutters or sewing machines uh or none of that, uh, there's a space for that larger group kind of activity. Uh, and the use really gets defined, defined over time. So adaptability of the particular space, but more the appropriate size per the use. Uh, and then the big deficiency, one of the things you can't do in children's uh really is provide a wide variety of uh engagement opportunities for significant numbers of people with the attendant space for their caregivers to be nearby. So really introducing the amount of space in a way that is sufficient for, I'm going to call it intergenerational, but it's, you know, three, five, seven-year-olds uh showing their younger siblings or learning from the old kid and then growing up to be that cool kid that's showing the, the younger ones how to do it. So it's a, a bit of an uh, uh, inter-age group experience uh nested within a series of collection-focused spaces that allows the library to present the collections in ways that uh are comfortable to subsets of users rather than cramming everything together into one or two blocks of space. Uh, and then allowing people to wander in between those collections in ways that supports their particular need. Uh, and then intertwined among that, a bunch of seating opportunities. We also wanted to make sure that we acknowledge that some people aren't there for that high-intensity use and actually need uh spaces that are a bit calmer uh to engage with the various services. And so there are spaces uh that can accommodate that kind of use. Again, these are spaces that aren't overly uh specialized. It's really a small-scale room, uh, can be one, two persons, um, maybe sized for four to six, uh, but really geared for a smaller number with control over the environment. Uh, and lighting is a great way to do that. Uh, these are uh kind of typical finishes that take on distinct, different characteristics based on how the LED lighting is tuned. Uh, so a way to accommodate a, a full spectrum of users' preferences for the space when they do come to engage. Uh, we did want to acknowledge that need for meeting rooms the size of uh B and C and perhaps D and E really focused uh in the plan on dedicating uh A, B, and C as a single, very large uh A, A-sized room. Uh, but finding replacements for B and C and making sure that they too were flexible. So a large multipurpose room uh that's adaptable to a series of different configurations and making sure there's enough flexible space uh to support storage. Uh, we wanted to make sure that some of them had a, a floor space. And this is particularly true of the children's uh program room that we're going to talk about in a minute that really had the capabilities to support some pretty messy activities. Uh, the library does a nice job with uh uh crafting. And so whether it is that sort of patron-driven or artisan-residence-driven, we want to make sure that the rooms had that capability. And then to make sure that there's enough power data uh projection to think about ways in which uh the immersive nature of a program uh or an event uh might involve more of a, a, an audiovisual component than the current arrangement supports. So it doesn't have to be as intense as some of these suggest, but the idea is that the space itself and the finishes and the technology capabilities aren't the limiting factors. It's more imagination and community need. So a lot of the rooms are envisioned as being different sizes, uh, sometimes connected to the exterior environment, sometimes more internalized, uh, but supportive of that wider range of potential uses. So in the detailed program, we've got uh an increase in the number of rooms at all of these sizes uh because we did see the demand in the statistics and in the stories from staff about their, their inability to accommodate all of that. And then the public meeting, the desire uh to hold programs that aren't necessarily library-driven, but the library would be a great venue uh for those kinds of activities. And then we did want to acknowledge that uh staff is an essential part of the service. Uh, the expertise uh really comes to fore in the engagement with the public. So those points of contact are important. But the behind-the-scenes spaces uh can't be ignored. So adaptability, flexibility, focus on, in many ways, the digital aspect of uh staff work. But there are certain elements that still are either paper-based or production-based. Uh, graphics is one. Any of the materials processing uh aspects of access services still require space for stuff. Uh, so allocating space by department. And those quantities were derived by actually looking through each of the component departments within the organization and thinking about them from a today-forward uh venue so that we aren't programming spaces out of date by the time you approve the program uh or uh five years hence, that there's enough space to be adaptable and accommodate growth, recognizing that there are pressures on being uh fiscally sustainable and that staff is the most significant expense over the course of time. So we ended up with a tally of space that suggests today you should really have another five to six thousand square feet of space in the building to be effective and that within ten years, you're really going to be You're really going to be, need to be closer to a hundred thousand people. Uh, partly because of the service aspect, but also because you're going to be expected to serve a significantly larger number of people. As Iowa City's population grows. Uh, and that's really based on current boundaries, and so if those boundaries shift again. Uh, if people, uh, outside the city limits continue to utilize, uh, Iowa City's library. As their primary source, uh, that's going to add pressure to the building. And so we want to make sure that that use isn't displacing resident use, so. We're projecting somewhere between twelve and thirteen thousand additional square feet. And once you attain that level, uh, we're suggesting that the building, uh, probably has attained. Uh, its effective maximum, uh, effective size, and that we really should be looking at distributing space, uh. In other locations across the, across the city. So this is another good stopping point, uh, really defining need for the existing building. Any thoughts or comments on, kind of where we find ourselves?
Two things that I heard nothing about are restrooms and spaces for feeding babies.
Yeah, there are spaces in the program that are, are identified for, uh, patron well-being. Uh, that's true of the staff work zone as well as the public. So there are, uh, we call them wellness rooms, uh, nursing would be a primary use of those spaces. Uh, programmed, we've got two in the public zone and I believe two in the staff zone, one for each level. Uh, public restrooms are driven by state code. Iowa's fairly progressive in that it requires, uh, more fixtures for women than for men. Uh, and we've allocated space so that if the library were, uh, interested, uh, there's enough space to. Make all of them, uh, unisex. Uh, the exception would be the first-floor restrooms associated with, uh, the meeting space. Uh, and even that could be, uh, worked out to accommodate, uh, more of a. A gender-neutral kind of arrangement if that were desired. So there, there is space in the program for, uh, a significant flexibility. In how you arrange space. Uh, for, uh, restroom functions.
So you mentioned that we are undersized for the usage. I'm just wondering. Where is the critical point where services start to significantly deteriorate?
So I think, I think you've crossed that threshold in some ways, uh, we've definitely heard stories that. Teens are reluctant to come in and take advantage of the teen space. That there aren't any places to send them other than that enclosed teen room. Where they feel like they're taking advantage of the social opportunities as well as, uh, the staff-provided level of interaction. Uh, that's a bit of a challenge now. I think, uh, there are people who are frustrated with the. Proximity with which they find themselves in children's services and probably are limiting the number of times. Or the extent or the time they spend in children's because of that forced proximity. Uh, the bit, the space is tight even when it is relatively empty and when it's at, at peak use levels. Uh, peak times of the day, it's got to be frustrating to, uh, sit, to engage in the interactives. To try and, uh, get on a computer or even wander the aisles and, and search for, uh, something to, to read or take home. I, I can't quantify that, uh, currently. Uh, your level of use suggests that people are still finding their way, the door count, the circulation levels, attendance. Uh, it's a community that really prizes all forms of library service and they're. They're coming often enough, uh, to take advantage of each of those components in significant numbers. The measure that we would typically look to, to gauge. A frustration level are those and the number of registered cardholders per capita. Uh, that one's particularly challenging because we're never really sure if everyone is purging the, their registration. Uh, on a consistent basis. And it really does focus on the people who care enough about borrowing materials to get a card. You don't really have to have a card to take advantage of all of the services offered. And so if I'm really interested in the space or a computer. Uh, those aren't necessarily measured, uh, but, uh. There is room in the comparison of a number of registered cardholders. Uh, I would expect to see something of an increase compared to some of your peers. But again, that's based on statistics that they're providing, and I don't know if they are as rigorous in purging. Data as, as you are. I would rely more on attendance, uh, door count. And, uh, circulation numbers than on, on that one, and you're still doing really well in all of those. Uh, but the stories we're, we're hearing, uh, from staff are that they are getting reports and seeing behaviors. That are based on frustrations with the, the compactness. Of, of those spaces. I would say you're at or passing, have passed some of those tipping points in children and teens. The second floor, there are zones where. Uh, the new workstations I think will be more enjoyable, the computer workstations, but there is space to, uh. Work with and the frustrations for adults on the second floor probably aren't as high. I would think on the first floor, there's a better arrangement for browsing that would support discovery. And people won't know that until, uh, they experience both. It's a, it's a well-tuned collection. I think people are finding what they want. And that's, that's what's driving the circulation numbers. I think that's, that's a good question for your staff too. Okay, we can come back to that, uh. We did look at space distribution. Iowa City is growing, uh, both in terms of population and I, I think, uh. Location of the physical boundary. There's a couple of things we look at in terms of, uh, whether or not a single facility is adequate to meet needs. Uh, one is geographic distribution, one is the quantity of space per capita. Uh, we already mentioned that you're, you're towards the high end, uh, within the, uh, Iowa peer group. Uh, but when you look at the growth of the city, the travel time, uh, you can see the diagram. Uh, ten minutes, uh, to the existing facility in fifteen minutes. We would expect that with the population growth projected within the corporate limit of the city. That the ten-minute drive time, uh, within five to ten years really becomes fifteen minutes. That is normally what we would consider to be the effective limit to with which, within which people are willing to make a routine visit. We do want to distinguish between routine and, uh, kind of a special destination, uh, trip. You think of something like a museum as being a destination, you'd make a visit, uh, on occasion. Because of something special going on, whereas we would think a library wants to be more like the supermarket, it's an essential part of. Uh, weekly or bi-weekly kind of life. And that if it's a cumbersome kind of experience to, uh, move from home to the library. Uh, because of the travel time and the frustration, that that becomes another point of friction. And reduces the frequency with which people will take advantage of the service. Uh, and that, that is a reduction in their, their quality of life, uh, and experience within the community, so. Uh, you're approaching the point where, um, travel time is going to become a consideration, we think that's. A bit down the road, but you're on the cusp of that. And it becomes more of an issue as the north and east, especially the east and southeast parts of the city fill up. There's a zoning in place that supports, uh, significant, uh, single-family, multifamily and mixed-use residential development. Uh, in that part of town. Growth to the east is a little bit, little bit more limited, uh, by virtue of, uh, other, other communities. Uh, growth and the proximity of, of other libraries. Uh, we compare that, uh, a couple of different ways, so we're, we're reasonably confident, but. You can gauge that and apply your, your own sense of what's a reasonable travel time. Uh, in the current configuration. Uh, we did want to acknowledge that not everybody comes to the library via, uh, personal transportation. Uh, and Iowa City has a, a pretty significant transit system for a community of this size. Both in terms of, uh, the number of routes, uh, the geographic distribution of stops. And, uh, kind of a user-friendly, no-fair approach to, to transit. Uh, so compared to a lot of communities, uh, there are ways for people who don't own a vehicle. Uh, to access the library. Um, still is a, a limiting factor. For, uh, children who need a caregiver or guardian, someone, uh, to help, uh, navigate that, um, so. Uh, it isn't a solves-all-problem kind of element. Uh, we also wanted to acknowledge that the bookmobile, uh, bridges some of the gap. If, uh, you can't get to the library via transit or personal automobile or friend. Uh, the library makes a pretty concerted effort to go to where people are. Uh, there are challenges establishing kind of an identity in a specific neighborhood, uh, entails a lot of effort. Uh, and there are a significant number of factors that are at play. In determining the effectiveness, especially early on of each, each stop. Uh, but the, the library has been able to, uh, make a significant, uh, effort. And those stops, uh, can draw from, um, uh, relatively small, uh, area. If you don't have transit, personal transit, but because a lot of these are on bus stops, they do become more effective. So we did want to acknowledge that there are ways, uh, with the existing bookmobile, uh, perhaps extension of the bookmobile. That some of those needs can be addressed. Um, there are aspects of bookmobile service that are wonderful, uh, the flexibility, adaptability, mobility. Uh, but there are also limits, uh, you know, in terms of, uh, neighborhood identity, in terms of programming. Uh, just in terms of sheer, uh, quantity of offering. Um, in terms of fitting the schedule of someone who might need these services. Uh, the bookmobile can't be there all day, every day, and so you have to be able to go to that stop when the vehicle is there. Uh, so, uh, there are limitations for, for any bookmobile. Uh, and as travel distance becomes, uh, greater, population increases on the east side, uh, southeast side. We're suggesting that within the, the ten-year timeframe. That it's appropriate to be thinking of at least one branch and probably more towards the east. I think population growth, uh, on the far side of the university. Um, uh, the quantity of, of residents, it might be more appropriate to think about, uh. Bookmobile, uh. But that's a not, uh, uh, foregone conclusion. Uh, but in terms of travel time, population density, uh, and simple geography. Um, down the road, we would think that pairing the existing facility with a, with a branch, uh, makes some sense.
And where. Sorry, Joe, where you have that spot is where the city is imagining the majority of growth is going to happen in the next ten to fifteen years.
Can you give us a, a street, a grid point for that?
I am specifically trying to avoid that. That is, that is a whole nother study.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we've, we're asking this need to provide neighborhood services to provide more data.
Sorry about that. So, yeah, I was trying to make this field pretty generic. And you can imagine it sliding in an arc.
No, right, it just, it have to have a compass, people here did write it right, and they knew what you were talking. Cause I was thinking we were looking more towards the southeast and I wanted to know how far north that really was.
Yeah, if it makes sense, uh, for this document to show it farther, farther south. Uh, happy to do that.
Yeah, we're going to get more data to kind of hone in there from the C. Planning office.
What does TWP mean?
Like. Of Iowa, those are the original names.
Oh, okay, TWP is township, yeah.
Yeah, township, I was just going to say that.
Yeah. Okay, is this a surprise to anyone?
It's not a surprise, it's just a, a significant challenge.
Yeah.
We know this is an issue, it's just, you start to put into a strategic framework. It, it's a major challenge.
Right.
And others think.
Yeah. Uh, we're always reluctant to take.
Yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate one of my, this is not just our impression that there's data behind this. It's very meaningful.
Help us make decisions in the future and ask for the whole group, so it is.
One of the things that we looked at, that, uh. Sorry. One of the things that we looked at. One of the things that we looked at and are reluctant to rely on, uh, based on just simple population projections. Is that those eleven libraries that we talked about, you're the only one of the top five or six that doesn't have a branch already. Um, the population, just a straight-line projection suggests that you would have. Two-thirds of a branch or basically a small branch are ready to serve the current population. And by twenty thirty-five, it expects you to have, uh, one plot, like one-point-two libraries. Again, those, those are always kind of overly narrow in focus. But I think the need to serve various populations in terms of quality of service, things that the bookmobile can't do. Uh, and then travel time, population density, uh, neighborhood identity, those sorts of things. Uh, become more the drivers, uh, kind of the quality of life that Iowa Citians expect. Uh, would drive more than just a simple, uh, population projection, but it's. It's some measure of, uh, reassurance to know that, uh, you would not be out on a kind of statistical limb. To be thinking about a branch in ten years. Okay, the last bit. Is, I think, more fun, sort of the. We know what we have, uh, we have that sense of what we need, how do we get there? Uh, these are a little bit more refined than the ones presented at the public meeting, so if you were there. Uh, these are actually area calculations translated into, uh, bubble diagrams. Uh, they are one version, they are not the only version, and the idea would be to make these things as, uh, simple as possible to reconfigure. But the idea is to take over more of the first floor, uh, mostly for public use. Uh, and most of that for children's use. So when we looked at that first-floor diagram at the public meeting and thought, whoa, that's really pretty big. When you measure out the space that the, uh, program suggests, uh, that was, those were actually pretty, uh. Accurate diagrams. Uh, in this diagram, we're showing an expansion of, uh, children's workroom. Uh, we're showing, uh, the, uh, facilities, maintenance room, uh, shifted. And we're showing, uh, marketing brought down to be adjacent to access services. Uh, and we're showing a new wall being constructed that links, uh, the existing wall with. An existing children's partition and really focuses on adult browsing, introducing, uh, stuff, pulling. Self-check closer to a new public service point that's closer to the point of entry, bringing bookends down. Uh, but really making a pretty quick connection to access to the second floor, quick browsing, I want to sit and read. Uh, I want to wait for my kid to come, but a lot of this is really, you need it to accommodate. Uh, the separation of collections, the provision of adequate space within each collection. The ability to incorporate little pockets of seating adjacent to or within those collections. Adjacent to, uh, program space, we're suggesting keeping this as a pop-up crafts or. Uh, kind of a, a secondary activity zone. Uh, until, or even after a major program space is, uh, identified. Uh, this would be, uh, an easy first step because it doesn't require additional space to be acquired. And it really is partitioning the space in a slightly different way, uh, than it is now, so. Some adjustments to how mechanicals are zoned, uh, but it isn't a significant structural reconfiguring of the space. Our second recommendation, uh, and these can be thought of as sort of, take these in sequence or. Uh, reconfigured if you think that there's a, a greater hierarchy that needs to be served, is to take the merge space. And develop a space that's essentially the size of your ABC suite now and dedicate the equivalent to. Uh, primarily children's programming. I say primarily because I think that would be the heaviest, uh, use, uh, for you. Uh, it'd be located in a way that provides pretty direct access off the, uh. Uh, access into, into children, so pretty direct and it could support. uh, access into, into children, so pretty direct and it could support wandering around before or after programs. Uh, if it were necessary, uh, either for library programming or other connections to the outdoor uh, space, either playground or ped mall, uh, pretty easy to support. And then uh, reconfiguring of the space for events, uh, pretty easy via the elevator that could bring tables and chairs up from uh, the workroom, and it still maintains a pathway in for someone else to be using the lower level space. Uh, that's the merge space down below. We aren't showing any library functions beyond the current storeroom being located on the, on the lower level. Uh, but that space in combination with the previous provides a pretty significant increase in the capability of your children's uh, services. The next element is to look at the other end of the first floor and make the, the sort of allocation of space pretty permanent. I don't know that we would actually suggest removing the walls just for flexibility and they exist, but it would make it more comfortable to just acknowledge that the, the walls are typically retracted. Would suggest upgrades in A V capability. Uh, and we would propose that the aisle space that's along this side of A now, actually move outside of the structural grid. Uh, I'm sorry, outside the structural grid, grid line, these columns probably want to stay. Uh, but then you would get seating within a much larger uh, zone within the space that could continue to be oriented towards the front. Uh, and then some of the back of this would be uh, simplified to take some of these uh, storage uh, queuing spaces out uh, and turning them into spaces in the sides. Uh, and then freeing that up for more of a pre-function space, people could mill about in a zone in front of uh, meeting room A plus without interfering as frequently with the path in and out of the building proper. The second floor is a bit different from what we showed at the public meeting based on some of that feedback. I think there was a concern that this space was uh, really, really nice and shouldn't be limited to a primary user group who has uh, limited hours within which they frequent the building. Acknowledging that there are homeschool groups and others that would take advantage of it, but we tried to use this for uh, every, every potential user and maintain it as seating. And then move the teen activity space into uh, space that can be freed up by a combination of staff relocations uh, and a shifting of the digital media lab to encompass some of the current page station. We're actually showing the page station being relocated uh, to provide a second public service point that, that might help control uh, access to the couple of meeting room B sized spaces and uh, provide service and visual control over the west end of the building, still maintain some sort of proximity to the arrival point. So we'd like to suggest that uh, teen space be developed uh, in this L-shaped space. Uh, they are pretty good users of uh, uh, various study spaces, so E and uh, a six-person study room would be nearby. Teens tend to be good users of digital media, so they would be nearby. Uh, we're suspecting that by the time this is implemented, we will have exhausted the finishes, uh, and it'll be technology update time for the digital media lab, so that might be a good time to pull down a wall and just shift these things. So relatively lightweight construction to make that accommodation. And then start to organize the space with a series of enclosed rooms. These are envisioned as being really almost entirely glass. Uh, and provide spaces for people to uh, engage in smaller, smaller scale activities that involve another person typically, but wouldn't be overly large if someone claimed them for their own, their own space. The current teen room uh, would be given over to uh, meeting room D sized uh, activity space. Uh, and we would take the uh, bookend space and convert it into a C sized room and a four-person meeting room. Uh, this might become a small uh, one-person, two-person lounge space, take advantage of that little window. Uh, that's kind of cool in that corner. Uh, all of this is pretty uh, flexible, but it leaves the technology kind of in its current zone. We wouldn't have to do this if the, the number of computer curls is still uh, what we're showing today. Uh, and it adds a meet, greet, flexible exhibit zone that's appealing to kind of a pretty wide variety of groups and could be supported uh, uh, of se- seminars uh, by virtue of its proximity to a number of different sized venues. Uh, this too is relatively lightweight construction. Uh, you have a number of air handling units, uh, so tapping into the supply of uh, a adjacent unit uh, is more conceivable than if we had one giant uh, unit. And the number of uh, people in these spaces is fairly analogous to the number of people that was originally envisioned uh, in those spaces, so it should be a significantly uh, changed uh, level of use, so the air supply um, should be fairly easy to adjust to a new use. Uh, farther down the road, uh, we would envision uh, taking advantage of the shift from paper to digital workspace and compressing the technical services and the adult and information services workroom by the amount of space that's given over to paper record storage now. Uh, this line, uh, a little, little arbitrary, that line might shift back and forth uh, to accommodate the specific workroom layout. Uh, but the spaces are in general, diagrammed large enough based on the program need. And then that would allow enough space to allow us to bring the staff lunchroom upstairs where it's closer to more of the staff. Uh, that would entail bringing a workroom up, uh, expand, uh, expanding some of the restroom space to accommodate uh, dedicated staff workrooms. Uh, and then introducing lockers uh, and a wellness room for, for staff. A little bit of leftover space for uh, some paper storage, but a lot of that would be compressed into underutilized space that's uh, currently in the open office space. And then the fun part about that is that it suggests the possibility of bringing the bookmobile uh, into the building. This would actually entail cutting out uh, three little windows and making a garage door and carving out the floor, much like we did with the meeting room corner. Uh, and creating a, an at Lynn Street uh, garage. Uh, and then a little stair up uh, from that stair ramp. Uh, and allow an at first floor level connection to uh, bring materials directly onto the bed of the bookmobile. Uh, and then taking the sort of space that's um, isolated by, by that move and making it a truly functioning rec space that isn't as reliant on uh, the old garage. Uh, it's still plan on using this as a delivery zone. Uh, that would make the operations of the bookmobile a lot less weather dependent, uh, safer for staff in that they aren't crossing uh, the street. A little bit of coordination when the bookmobile is coming in and out. Uh, but uh, I think that can be accommodated uh, with people or with uh, uh, signage and, and lights. And then the last element was to take advantage of the built-in capacity that was envisioned at the time the addition was constructed. The structural capacity here for one to two floors of additional use. Uh, it depends on the weight of what's, what's put uh, on the existing structure. Uh, one possibility is residential, in which case you could probably get two floors of residential here. But I think a better use is to retain it for public functions. And one of the things that has come up in a number of uh, focus groups, user group meetings with the staff and then with the community is the desire to have uh, a community-wide servicing space that supports multiple groups perfor- or performing or graphic arts. Uh, and so the thought was to create uh, a space that has, I'm sorry. Uh, seating capacity for uh, two hundred and fifty people, there's enough potential here to create that on a slope floor, if that were desirable, or on a flat floor. Create a, a larger performance uh, space at the end of it, think of it as a stage that could literally be raised. Uh, in some capacities, it might be a height adjustable. Enough space to mount uh, better productions or to store items that were used for the events out in this space. And then general building storage, tables, chairs, whatnot. And arrange that in a way that has uh, additional restrooms to support uh, that intensity of use. Uh, uh, refreshment uh, zone that would support that uh, as well as uh, pre-function space uh, adjacent to the venue that could also function as uh, public reading room when there isn't an event going on uh, in the, the auditorium. That could also spill out onto a terrace, part of which could be covered, uh, part of which could be opened and would look down on the, the intersection of the three arms of the pedestrian mall. Uh, for orientation, the little skylight over the old Oculus that came out of the Carnegie Building. Uh, to get to that space, we're showing uh, a main stair extension that would arrive at the same point that an elevator located in the clock tower would occur. Uh, that would entail uh, an extension of the stair coming up off of the existing main stair. Here you see the elevator space. Our conference room could remain because the stairs climbing, it would land on top of that room. And then on the first floor, that elevator footprint would land uh, at the end of this public first floor adult zone and outside of the children's space, so people could come and find their way in and up to. And you could showcase library services on their way to that, that third floor. Uh, that one would be uh, independent of any of the other modifications, although it seems like it would be prudent to try and think about whether or not this makes sense in concert with any effort to re-roof the building. Um, you would hate to re-roof the building in five or ten years. Uh, and then in seven to twelve years, uh, be tearing it all off. Um, roof would have a, an extended lifetime that you'd want to realize as much as you can. So. A lot of elements to consider, uh, we think they are all fairly independent. Uh, for the most part, they can be taken in just about any sequence, although with some of the, the teen spaces, we are suggesting uh, that this space is, is found by virtue of moving uh, some of the staff functions to the first floor. Other than that, they're, they are fairly, fairly independent, so depending on priorities, these could be taken in any sequence. Our next step is to price these, so uh, comparing investment to uh, benefits will be part of the, the final analysis. So questions or comments on all of that?
And if you need time, please send me your feedback and I can
We do, I'm sorry, but yeah.
Is Joe is coming into um, our in-service day, he'll be here from ten to noon and will be giving um, an overview to the staff. So if you want to um, join in at that, if that's, if you want to kind of purify it a little bit and bring some questions and have opportunity there.
Yeah.
That's an opportunity to go through this again.
Okay, I did have one question. Um, you, you mentioned these sort of like sensory spaces that are kind of just small spaces that are, are calming, but I didn't see anything like that in this plan, or did I just miss it?
Yeah, the thought is to try and identify best locations for that, so our thought is to take, um, you have to stop touching this thing. That's light. Uh, is to take uh, one of these spaces uh, and convert it into uh, that kind of function. So if it helps to be uh, very remote but close, excuse me, uh, a little bit isolated but we, close to an arrival point, we would suggest this, if it wants to be a little bit larger, so you can accommodate uh, more than one or two people, uh, but give them each enough room, we might suggest one of these larger rooms. Uh, we would try and uh, stay away from a more active zone by its nature. Um, so those are, uh, the location is to be determined.
Okay.
Joe, does your design here show a reduction in the adult collections overall because you're combining two into one area?
Yeah, we are expecting a couple shifts in uh, calculation, in collection size. One is that uh, children's will grow.
Uh, right.
Uh, another is that uh, um, aspects of the adult collection, graphic novels, uh, the narrative side of nonfiction would see some growth, but the how-to component of nonfiction uh, would shrink.
That's the only real reduction though, because it just, it appears to be much smaller space.
Uh, I think it's a little deceptive, right? It, uh, currently it comes over. Uh, it, it jogs a bit, definitely comes over here and then a lot of this, in fact, some of this is pretty loosely arranged. There's a, already uh, been a, a weeding of the collection. Um, we're trying to balance uh, total count with that merchandising, which would take, take a little bit more space. Uh, so our thought is that there's some merchandising on this level, uh, but the majority of it is uh, on the first floor. So if we wanted to compare, I'm gonna escape here. I tell everybody, never really do this, but I'm gonna do it anyway. Say that the adult collections really are this marketplace plus these two. Uh.
Yeah.
Bands. So it's, it's seeing a decrease in audio, a decrease in video and a decrease in the how-to aspects of nonfiction with some increases in print, children's and print graphic novels. And we spent some time with staff thinking, thinking through that. Uh, and these are long-term, we're not expecting it to occur overnight. Uh, but within the next ten years, we think these are pretty realistic. In fact, audio and video have seen uh, shifts already, primarily audio. I think video will continue to seek a new balance between streaming and more of a boutique or uh, kind of local, I'm gonna call it local history, a need for certain physical items to be maintained locally. Uh, but it's much more uh, community-specific rather than a general approach to audio and video materials. So, yeah, in general, a contraction of print over time uh, and a contraction of uh, audio quicker and uh, contraction of video probably slowest of all.
One of the things that um, we have an issue with collection development is that we don't have enough room for our fiction collection to breathe. We are often weeding because of space issues. Um, and this would give us an opportunity to have a little market for those collections to grow. Um, and with that marketplace, we can, section can, we can bring down, like we want to do a display on cookbooks. Or we can bring all the new nonfiction downstairs and show people that we have a robust nonfiction collection that might bring people upstairs. So we're thinking of ways that we can kind, large print might, would stay down, I think, in the marketplace area too because that, um, that's an accessibility issue.
With longer circulation periods help with that.
Play around with that.
Or other costs. I'm just thinking if you had a larger percentage of the collection that's actually found in the building for a four-week
Hmm.
loan period or that three weeks, does it buy a space?
Well, it creates longer time though.
Like, we might for some, we'd have to, we'd have to kind of stratify it, but I'm just saying when we moved last time, we asked people to not return their books for a while, just because we couldn't handle.
Yeah.
We couldn't handle.
Right. And I think when we do carpeting, we might be asking people to keep their things at home too.
It sounds counterintuitive, but it's, it is a pragmatic approach.
I think the other uh, piece of flexibility that the plan offers is that why do I do that? Uh, that the plan offers is that something like conference room of these Bs uh, can be held in abeyance until you're confident that the collection block is adequate. And they can be added incrementally over time. Uh, they did the addition of B, excuse me, C and D, uh, and another E help. Uh, if it's more important to have another B, uh, maybe that's a better use of this space. Uh, maybe as you're uh, uh, learning the, the new space, decide that B isn't essential. So this is a fairly flexible zone in general. We were trying to take advantage of the current density of uh, data connections in here uh, and the relative lack in this area. Um, but other than that, uh, our, our key elements are when you arrive, you want to see a friendly smiling face. Uh, that face wants to see someone who's having uh, trouble with technology. And then we wanted to keep people And then we wanted to keep people close to the edge.
What action steps, what would you like from us tonight?
I think what um, think of feedback that you have, provide it to me, so I can provide it to Joe. And if there's questions that you have um. About the services or things that you saw today, um, it would be, yeah, that would be the next steps.
Yeah. We will have a revised draft in December and then you'll have time to mull that over. Uh, and then a follow-up for uh questions again. Uh, and then, you know, depending on your approach, contemplating a, a time to formally accept. The report. So this, this really is intended as an introduction and a, a check on, on our progress.
Thank you. It's very informative. It takes a while to digest it.
A lot of it, yes.
It does.
When would this be available to us to review at our own pace, just having the slide set or the.
Mm-hmm.
Basic information available to the trustees.
I can, I can provide this in its current form today.
I think that would be helpful, just because you have a lot of data.
Yeah.
And, and you've given us a good scare factor.
Yeah, this, this is actually the condensed version. Uh, there are a few more data slides, so I will send you that one. Yeah, yeah, I'll send that to your attention, Anne.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Good night.
Thank you. Thank you. Good night.
Good night. Looking at the time, would people like to reconsider the full agenda abbreviated or?
Yes.
To go forward.
I guess. We have a pretty light agenda in December. We could move the digital collection management education to January. Um.
I think we, or, or we could, and we could possibly put off these two policy reviews because they're internal reviews. Um, I think the advocacy on the working group probably has a timeliness.
Yes.
They want to take into consideration and we always directors report, don't know what's going on. But perhaps those are the priorities for tonight.
Yeah.
People agree.
Yeah, let's just do whatever the staff needs us to get done tonight.
One, I think us to do the advocacy.
Yep.
I think us to do the.
Yep.
All right. So we're going to move forward. Um, advocacy working group, do we have an update on statement?
So um, I don't believe we got any feedback. Um. Or if we did, I wasn't aware of it. I did ask people to direct declare and she was not here tonight. Um, but we have a statement that is in draft form. The. Background information wasn't actually meant to be part of the draft.
That was interesting opening.
Um, but uh, we have the draft statement and if. You know, if anyone wants any changes, we should talk about those, but otherwise we should just vote on the statement. Um, there are no updates. I think last time we met, the ruling hadn't been issued yet. On the injunction, but there has been an injunction issued and. They are prohibited from continuing to move collections to Moyn for the moment. That's based on that statute that says they are required to have an Iowa city location and of course the. Legislature will be meeting starting in January and they could change what the statute said. So I do think it's important for us to get our statement out sooner rather than later. So that's my whole update.
Yeah.
So is that what this is?
That is Mary's, the, the city council statement.
Page thirty-six, yeah.
Okay.
We can page thirty, thirty-six.
For the, yeah.
Okay.
I think the statement is cogent and very convincing, and I think we should accept it right away.
Mm-hmm.
I don't see any problems with it whatsoever.
Are you making a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept this.
You need a second.
So second.
Hey, just for one little bit more discussion for a second, um, what's the distribution for this? Where's it going to go?
Um, my assumption was that it would be distributed the way that these are typically distributed on the boards.
Okay.
You know, page and.
The advocacy under the advocacy, advocacy statements.
Yeah.
Hmm. So will this be distributed to any media, to, to the press or anything?
Would you like us to send a press release?
I'm missing the working group, just what the, but they're suggesting.
Uh, we did not cover that specifically, but a press release sounds like a good idea to me.
We've done that in the past with the other advocacy statements.
Are we ready to call for a full then? Okay, we're ready. So all those in favor?
Oh.
Opposed, staying, okay. So this will get posted quickly?
Thank you.
All right. Which one is it? Directors.
Couple of things I just wanted to add is that um Jen and I will meet with the city manager's office on Monday, November twenty-fourth to discuss our budget request. So we'll have more information on when we're out with that in December. And uh, we are receiving RSVPs from local elected officials, both state, uh, at the state level. And on the city council for the legislators' receptions. So if you were able to attend, please do so to help advocate for the library.
No, I, I cannot attend that except actual at that time, but I want to encourage people to consider attending because. It reinforces those representatives that do show that we care. And I appreciate that they took the time of their day to hear what the issues are that are important to us, so. I just want to encourage people to consider attending, especially since I can't.
We're going to promptly start at uh six, but that's when the actual uh presentation starts. So if you can't make it until then, six o'clock's a good time to come. And then um each library has five minutes to tell our story about um, you know, talk about community partnerships. And uh, we'll quickly go through and it should be, it should end at seven. So if you're wondering how long it's going to take, one.
Anything else about the um in-service?
Yeah, uh, Jen sent an email with the in-service day agenda and then um, we can RSVP, um, please do.
It is. It was, okay, um. Well, throughout the department reports, though, I really appreciate what was sent. It's just, it's, it's gangly and I won't let you guys pull them, Jane.
Yeah.
Um, welcome report similarly, uh, they want to have any specific questions and they want to give to the department of the. We always said going past that there's something that's a burning issue for you. Let's get it first.
I didn't dump a bunch of data, so.
All right, um, I, okay, under presence before, I don't have anything to add this evening other than. I'm encouraging people to look at this and if you have questions, you know, sometimes when you're, we have a lot of new people on the board this year. We have questions to ask them because we're probably just not seeing and saying, I need a fresh perspective. So don't think any questions should be. You know, it's really important for us to be hearing questions and I am excited about the Carnegie Corporation gift.
Yes.
Just to have, get a gift and surprise.
Yeah.
Like someone loves you. Um, announcements from members.
Quick questions. Do, are there any amounts for the um book gala at Prairie Lights of how much was raised that night?
I don't know.
Okay.
The bat. I know that it, they were the busiest they've ever been and they.
It was very busy.
They said that it was like the weekend before Christmas.
Yes.
That's how busy it was. Um, Katie should have some numbers.
Right. I was just curious.
Thank you all for coming.
Um, communications, there was the news that were, that was included, um consent agenda. Uh, can we have a motion to approve the consent agenda or concerns anyone may have? Did you make a motion?
Right, yeah.
Do we have seconds? All those in favor?
I have.
Anywhere opposed? Okay, let's just talk about the um agenda for December since we are going to be moving things around a little and trying to figure out what's practical. If there, if the architect is going to be back, do you have a sense of how much time they might need?
I think he's going to send you something to review. I don't think he's going to be at the VP.
Yeah.
Okay, I will make sure and I'll figure out.
And his information was worthwhile. It's just, I'm trying to figure out the, the time allocation.
The best rating.
Um, we were to be doing the recording and streaming review. Would that take very long? I know the bylaws and collection development. Tend to be policy reviews that take a little time.
Recording and streaming should.
Right, no change during that.
Okay, so do you, do you think we can fit both of those policy, policy views into December with the continuing education program too? Or do you think just we move one of them?
I think we should, if any, everybody's available to move the continuing education in January.
Okay.
And get the policies.
We'll think, we'll move the continued education one month. Great. And then we'll put both the policy reviews. In addition to the recording and streaming review there. All right, and then we, otherwise the agenda should look similar to what you see.
Yeah, some extra time to review the bylaws.
And the, and the architects.
Yeah.
Yeah, they'll sign it along.
The whole month, so, um, all right, so do we have a motion to, to adjourn?
I'm going to.
Okay, second.
Second.
All this in favor?
I agree.
Great. Thank you for your patience tonight. It was a little bit longer than we expected, but it was information packed.
Yes, yeah.
Good.